Okay, thank you for doing that. All right, welcome and good evening and welcome to the Federway City Council Meeting for April 3rd of 2018. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, but liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome. All right, the very first item we have on the agenda is a proclamation for the Sexual Assault Awareness Month for April 2018, and I'll go ahead and read this, and we have Matty Nelson with CASEARC, the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center here. And Matty, if you can come to the podium, and I'll go ahead and read this, and then I'll come down to the podium in just a moment. And they made the writing for me bigger on this one, so I can actually read it without putting on my Costco readers. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in the community, and whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community, statistics show that one out of every three girls, one out of five boys, and 23 percent of women are the victims of sexual assault. And whereas on college campuses, one in five women and one in 16 men are sexually assaulted during their time in college. And whereas we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence, prevention, support survivors, and speak out against harmful attitudes and actions. And whereas prevention is possible when we increase education, awareness, and community involvement. And whereas each day of the year is an opportunity to create change for the future, and now therefore we, the undersigned mayor and the council of the city of Federway, do hereby proclaim April 18th, April 2018 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Federway, and encourage all citizens to join in this special observance and join advocates and communities across the country in taking action to prevent sexual violence. Sign this third day of April 2018. And I'll come down to the podium. I would like to say, though, that CASEARC does such an important service for the community. Many people don't realize that when a case of this nature, what they refer to as a special assault or an SAU case at the King County Prosecutor's Office, the practice in King County for every one of those cases is to have a CASEARC advocate present during the preliminary interviews, the interviews with the police officers, the meet and greets with the prosecutors, the difficult defense interviews that need to occur for the system to occur properly, and most importantly, during the trial and its sentencing. And they do so much work that really, the people from all age ranges and in all types of cases, it's such a heartbreaking time, but such an important time for people to be able to piece their lives back together. And so we just want to say a special thank you to the work that CASEARC does, and really helping the courage of those folks who stand out against this such terror in the fabric of our community and such a heartbreaking crime. So I'll bring this down. Thank you, Matty.
Do you want to have an extra button?
Oh, yeah, thank you very much.
Do I have a commit?
Please, yes.
Okay. I want to thank mayor and the council member to willing to proclaim April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. I think the importance of keeping a community safe is to really raise awareness and making sure that the victim and survivor feel comfortable and safe to come forward to work with law enforcement, be able to willing to report it. It's such a taboo issue still, people still don't want to talk about it, it's still such a shameful and guilty topic for people to talk about it, and I think it's important to say that it's not just law enforcement's job or the prosecutor's job, it's a community's issue that we need to be able to create a safe environment for people to come forward to really kind of know what are the grooming behaviors that offender do, and knowing that they should be the people that take responsibility for that, what they do instead of blaming the victims. So thank you again for continuing supporting CASEARC and human services fundings. Thank you.
Thank you, Matty. Next, we'll have a progress report from our Violence Prevention Coalition Steering Committee, the VPCSC co-chair Doug Baxter. Doug, welcome.
Thank you. That is not my presentation. That looks much better. So, good evening, Mayor Farrell, and Deputy Mayor Honda, and members of the city council. My name is Doug Baxter, I am the Community Integration Program Manager at CHI-Franiscan Health, and I chaired the Violence Prevention Coalition Steering Committee. So it's been about a year since we presented our initial findings to the city council, and there has been a lot that's gone on, and a lot of progress made in preventing violence in Federway. Our goal at the outset of our coalition was to liaise with the community and firmly and submit recommendations regarding what is needed to reduce violence, and we came up with 10 policy recommendations. Then the council then took those, and they were formally adopted by this full body in September of last year. So as a reminder, these were the 10 recommendations that we came up with, and I'm going to go through each one because there's actually been progress made on each of the recommendations. I wouldn't say that we are fully satisfied with the progress we have, but we have gotten farther than maybe I thought we would have this time last year. So our first recommendation was for a bystander awareness project, and we wanted to work with Dawn to do this. This is where it actually had the least impact, so I want to thank Deputy Mayor Honda and the Domestic Violence Task Force in Federway for trying to move this one forward. There's been a message into Dawn to have a training scheduled here at the city, we just haven't heard back from Dawn yet, so on this one, I would say more to come. On mentoring and volunteerism, we didn't see a mentoring incentive for our city staff, but I will say between the two main programs, communities and schools, and mentoring me with the school district, they do report having 12 city staff who are mentors. So I would say that is great progress, and thank you for encouraging mentoring among your staff. And also, there were 14 members of the VPCSC, including the executive director from Advancing Leadership and our local Boys and Girls Club Director. One of the AL projects this year was to work with the EX3 Teen Center on creating a mentoring program during their power hour. So they're currently recruiting for that, so you know, we don't want to just stick to the two main school-based programs in town, there's actually been work to create more opportunities for mentoring in Federway, and that is definite progress. We also asked for more social-emotional learning expansion. Federway Public Schools has taken up this mantle, and they are committed to bringing Second Step, which is a social-emotional learning curriculum, to all elementary schools by the end of the next three years. There's a partnership at CHI-Franiscan, part of our Violence Prevention Initiative grants was to provide $30,000 to the school district, and to actually have our staff member Jennifer Cox over here, her full-time job is to work with elementary schools on expanding the Second Step program. So the district and the hospital have taken up part of this initiative, this recommendation, and are working to push it forward. We also pushed for a one-stop resource center, and our goal here is to bring the REACH Center, which is a currently existing model in Tacoma, up to Federway, and they want to come here. I want to thank councilmember Johnson for coming with me to the REACH Center, meeting with their executive director, and we've had many conversations over the last year between Tacoma Goodwill, the REACH Center, and stakeholders in Federway. This can happen, and this is something that I think would solve a lot of problems in Federway, because right now, we ask if you're a youth, like a 19-year-old, and you need a job, a GED, and other assistance, we have to have you go to Federway, a place in Renton, a place in Auburn. We want to bring all those to one center in Federway, provide the infrastructure for people to get services, especially young people 16 to 24 years old. This doesn't necessarily require city resources, it does require leadership. Their business model is based on having in-kind office space, so how do we help them? How do we use our bully pulpit to help get them access to a place that is looking for a tenant? I really believe this is one of those recommendations that could solve a lot of different issues facing young people in Federway and increasing access to services, so I would like to see this one move forward in the next year. Youth employment. So immediately after presenting last year, a group of people came together, and we were having separate conversations about youth employment needs, and we created the YES Network. Right now, we created two things, so a five-session job training course at Todd Beamer High School. We just finished the fourth session, there are 25 youth who have significant barriers to employment going through that program right now. And next week, we are having an all-district job fair at Todd Beamer on Wednesday, the 11th, from 2:30 to 5:30, and I want to encourage any young people, especially 16-18-year-olds, Federway School District students, if you're looking for a job, we are going to have 30 employers at Beamer. And I really want to thank Jarden Weidenfeld here at the city, he has come to all of our meetings, he has gotten city staff to speak at the job training session, he has three city departments recruiting youth to work over the summer. So I want to thank the city and especially the mayor's office for their leadership in this recommendation. If you want to know who is involved in this, and this is what we really wanted to see coming out of the VPCSC, is organizations and people who care about young people and their safety coming together on a shared goal. That's exactly what we wanted, and look at everyone who has come together on this. And when you include all those people who have been involved in other aspects and attending the job fair, this is significant progress, and this is a model that can be replicated at all schools in the district, so they can take this curriculum being created, we can do the job fair again. It's actually really light on resources. After-school programs, there have been several, and I want to call out the Parks and Rec Department and the Community Center, because they were having conversations about starting an after-school program for elementary schoolers as we were going through this process, and that started, so I want to thank them for that. Other people who took up this call was the Puget Sound ESD, they created an after-school program at Wildwood Elementary, and it's still in the works, but the Boys and Girls Club and King County Housing Authority are working on providing after-school programs at the two public housing properties in Federway. So that should be open sometime this summer, so trying to expand access to after-school opportunities. On this one, I'd say we've done a good job with elementary schoolers. The gap is middle schoolers. There is still, if you're not into sports, there aren't a whole lot of opportunities after-school for you, so I'd say an area of growth for us is to find ways where we can give middle schoolers an outlet and a safe place to go between when school gets out and parents get home from a job. Restorative justice, communities and schools and Federway Public Schools joined up, they got a $70,000 grant from King County Best Starts for Kids to expand restorative practices in all the middle schools in the district, and they used the VPCSE findings to help justify that grant, to show that there was community, that's exactly what we wanted, for other organizations to take this information and use it as they look to leverage resources. I also want to give Judge Larson a shout-out, he has created a community court, I wouldn't say this is exactly restorative justice, but he uses the principles of restorative justice to create that community court. That didn't take any money, that just took will and some connections and some people signing on to a vision. And I want to say through that $70,000 grant from Best Starts, there are actually community trainings coming up, and they are listed here. These are open to the community and not just parents. So if anyone's looking to learn more about restorative justice and restorative practices in schools, attend one of these sessions at the local middle schools. Some of them have to be determined, but I would say if you contact anyone at communities and schools, they can help guide you to the right direction. The VPCSE also asked for more gun storage, and we asked for that because what we heard from our police partners is that a lot of guns used in crimes in Federway are stolen, either from home invasion robberies or from cars. So we didn't know what to do, but we thought if we could incentivize or give away gun safes and storage devices, that could have an impact. Turns out Seattle Children's already does this, they do about four across the state every year, and we asked for them to come to Federway, and they're doing it. So they're going to be here on May 12th, it's a Saturday, at the Sportsman's Warehouse from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. They're giving away 350 lock boxes, 50 trigger locks, and 600 cable locks. And I want to thank the city of Federway, because they kicked in for a sponsorship, as did CHI-Franiscan Health, and what we heard from Seattle Children's is this is by far the most local support they've received for any of these events they've done around the state so far, so they commend our community for seeing the need and pitching in. There is a need, they would like to have about 10 or 15 volunteers that day, so if you would like to help direct traffic, or you know, they'll give you all the directions, talk to me, I can get you signed up, all you have to do is show up at 9:00 a.m. instead of 10:00 a.m., and they'll give you directions, and I can even give you a CHI-Franiscan t-shirt for participating if you so choose. But we do want to show that we are a community that helps, we support these events, and we're going to show up and do what we can. So again, if you're looking to volunteer, talk to me, and I am happy to set you up. City Federway is also going to host a Firearms Tragedy Prevention Network meeting later on this year in November, that'll be here in council chambers. They meet four times a year across the state, and they discuss issues relating to firearm tragedies, so thank you for opening up this room for that group later on this year. And this is a flyer for the event, they do need help with marketing, so if there are ways to get word out about this event, I've already seen a flyer going around on Facebook on a few of Federway pages, but let's find, let's work together on some ways to get the word out so that everyone knows. And Seattle Children's is involved in this event because they see a link between safe gun storage and suicide prevention, and it's true, the research is absolutely clear. So again, this is one of those recommendations, one of those strategies that might solve a couple pressing issues in our community. We also saw the need for more youth substance abuse treatment, and when we were going through this process, if you were a youth who has substance abuse challenges, you could not get treatment inside Federway city limits, no one offered it. We're happy to report that WAPU Community Services opened an office in Federway. They are around 288th and Pack Highway, and they've been open for a few months, and I have not checked in with them, but I hope they're thriving and doing well in our community. That's still a gap, we still need more services, and that's something where if we bring the REACH Center up to Federway, other services like Kent Youth and Family could host a group in that facility. So we're hoping to be a little more creative than just bringing more buildings to Federway. Our last recommendation from the VPCSE was city staff time to move these recommendations forward. We didn't get that, but we have, I believe, the next best thing. I mentioned earlier about using these recommendations to leverage funding. The Federway Youth Action Team, which is a new nonprofit, they started at the same time that this coalition came together on the same issue. They wrote a grant to the Seattle Foundation and Best Starts for Kids on a Policy and Systems Change Grant. So they are able to hire someone, and her first day is today, that's Lydia right here. Her job is to help write an implementation plan for these recommendations, and really, what we're trying to do with the Youth Action Team is get more youth input on this. We recognize that when our coalition was making these recommendations, we were talking to mainly adults and community stakeholders. Lydia's job is to host some focus groups, and really, we want the voice of youth who are impacted by the juvenile justice system in these recommendations, and also into more aspects of the city of Federway. So she is going to be here for about a year, for 20, she's a half-time position, but she is working on this. And also through CHI-Franiscan, we wrote, moving these recommendations forward into our grant to our funder, Catholic Health Initiatives. I've actually moved on to a new job, I am no longer the Violence Prevention Coordinator, but we have hired a new person, he doesn't start yet, but he's here tonight, so Ryan Lum. He starts in two weeks, on April 16th, and he actually comes from Habitat for Humanity, so he's been active in Federway and an active member of our Build the Bridge Coalition for quite a while, so we are excited to get him on board. So between Lydia and Ryan, you now have two people that have written into their job descriptions, supporting the city of Federway to move violence prevention strategies forward. So we're excited, we have done a lot, there's been a lot happening, and I will say, even though the city has a process to go through, the community, after hearing these findings, did not wait. The community moved forward immediately to try to get things going. And actually, this slide actually took this verbatim from the presentation a year ago, and these are still true. Our vision for the future is that the city makes violence prevention a sustained priority. One thing I didn't see in your legislative agenda and was violence prevention, so maybe an opportunity in the future is to add that to your legislative priorities. We would like to see the city be a little more proactive in moving some of these recommendations forward. A lot of times, you know, people hear this and they think money, like city money going towards these things, but that's not what we ask for. What we ask for is more leadership and being more proactive. Sometimes it's not money we need, sometimes it's someone thinking about office space that someone needs to fill, it's the city writing a grant or being a partner on a grant, like you have already. We need to see maybe a little more of that for those recommendations that haven't moved forward as much. We want you to advocate and also just find other ways to invest in prevention. Even though our coalition, we have not had a single meeting since last April after we gave our findings, but as you've seen, between the CHI-Franiscan, Advancing Leadership, the Teen Center, myself, Lawrence and Mark, we're all part of this coalition, there's a lot of people that are invested in this. We want to see it move forward and be successful, and we want this frankly, to be a community where kids feel safe, and they can grow up and thrive and be successful. And you have a lot of help, and we want to see it move forward, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you so much for the work you do. Okay, financial presentation, capital funds versus operating funds, our finance director, Adeyemi Rulala. This presentation was made at the request of the Finance Committee. Adini, can you, as Chair of FedRec, would you like to explain what got us here and what prompted the presentation?
Well, I think people are confused about operating in capital budgets, unless you've been working in the finance arena for a while, you may not understand that there's a very, very distinct relationship between, they're tied together, but you can't use them across bounds, at least not capital funds. Capital funds can only be used for capital items, it cannot be used to support operations. But our finance director will highlight that, too.
Very good, thank you. Adeyemi?
Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, council. I think one of the very complication in government accounting that is so very unclear is people often assume, especially for city government, that whatever money you have, you are able to spend it. Cities now the same as maybe like a fire district, like a school district, or water district, where they have single purpose, you know, fire district to do fire-related issue, where you have city government with maybe 20, 40 different special companies in just one entity. I now try to go over that gradually, so that we can... City government is a conglomerate of many companies, different companies with different products, regulations, and revenue sources. City government is unlike a school district, fire district, water district, or sewer district. All of these other government entities generally provide a specific single service. We can now use funds intended for capital projects to fund police officers or park maintenance. This big bucket represent the city as a whole. That is jail service, surface water, building maintenance, police, law firm, maintenance, construction, equipment rental, community service, car rental, courts, parks, fitness center, building maintenance, that is some of the services with different revenue sources that are included within the city government. And you can now use money from one to serve the other. Just to give you a little bit of background in terms of our revenue for 2018, for most of our citizens, this is what they are looking at for 2018. What was not there last year is now there. Now this year, our residents are also paying property tax for sound transit. Now, as I mentioned earlier, you have some of these other districts, I'm not suggesting that their taxes are high or low, that is not the point I'm trying to make. I'm just trying to say like school district is responsible for educating the kids, fire district is responsible for fire protection. Meanwhile, you have city government that is responsible for various different functions. Here is a library, that is the tax that they are getting. Here is the city of Federway that is doing all of this other stuff. Here is fire district. Here is the school district. So that gives you perspective on the tax makeup for the city of Federway. We put this together a couple of years ago, among the King County cities, this is how we rank, based on the per capita of general fund tax revenue for King County cities. This is how we rank. This is 2014.
district, where they have single purpose. You know, fire district to do fire-related issue, where you have city government with maybe 20, 40 different special companies in just one entity. I now try to go over that gradually, so that we can... City government is a conglomerate of many companies, different companies with different products, regulations, and revenue sources. City government is unlike a school district, fire district, water district, or sewer district. All of these other government entities generally provide a specific, single service. We can now use funds intended for capital projects to fund police officers or park maintenance. This big bucket represent the city as a whole. That is jail service, surface water, building maintenance, police, law firm, maintenance, construction, equipment rental, community service, car rental, courts, parks, fitness center, building maintenance. That is some of the services with different revenue sources that are included within the city government. And you can now use money from one to serve the other. Just to give you a little bit of background in terms of our revenue for 2018, for most of our citizens, this is what they are looking at for 2018. What was not there last year is now there. Now, this year, our residents are also paying property tax for sound transit. Now, as I mentioned earlier, you have some of these other districts. I'm not suggesting that their taxes are high or low, or that is not the point I'm trying to make. I'm just trying to say, like, school district is responsible for educating the kids, fire district is responsible for fire protection. Meanwhile, you have city government that is responsible for various different functions. Here is a library, that is the tax that they are getting. Here is the City of Federal Way that is doing all of this other stuff. Here is fire district. Here is the school district. So that gives you perspective on the tax makeup for the City of Federal Way. We put this together a couple of years ago. Among the King County cities, this is how we rank, based on the per capita of general fund tax revenue for King County cities. This is how we rank. This is 2014. To do a little digression, just so that the citizens know, some of this information are also readily available. If they go to our website, there's so many reports out here. If they go to our website inside the city, go into the Finance, and right in there, you have a lot of information right here. Here is the information on finance report and audit. There's a report that is out here and given to the council. Out there also, the Popular Annual Financial Report. The portion for 2016 is right there. There's some information here that compare our city to our neighboring community. What I just showed you before, that was 2014. This is 2015. And in this report, we just drop a notch. In 2014, we were 29. In 2015, we are 30. We are putting together a recent report, which will come with our new PAFOR. I hope we will be able to stay relatively the same. But for the citizens that are watching from home, there are several reports on this website that can be really beneficial and be informative to them. I just want to use an example to demonstrate the difference between different funds. If I were to have 4.2 million in REIT, 4 million in SWIM, 2.8 million in Prop 1, and 10.5 million in property tax, amounting to a total of 21.5 million. From this, these are my spending.
Adey, could you go back to that last slide and just explain to everyone what REIT is and what SWIM is, so that they understand?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
SWIM is like a surface water management, which is an enterprise fund. It's supposed to be able to recover its own cost, just like water district, just like sewer district. It's intended to charge the users for the services, and the fees that are charged is used exclusively for those customers. You cannot take money from those group to serve other group, even though they may be the same citizens. You must spend that money to provide that service that they pay for, according to the law. If you have too much in there, instead of spending that money someplace else, the law say, well, if you have too much, then you need to reduce what you charge the citizens, or what you charge the user, the customers, instead of taking the money to do something else that doesn't relate to that, but yes, may benefit them, but doesn't relate to providing that service. You have Prop 1, that is Proposition 1, that was passed by the city residents several years ago. The utility tax that the city charge, it was originally 6%. Prop 1 add additional 1.75% to that, and that is how we get to 7.75 rate that we toss around. The condition that the citizens pass that 1.75% was to say, well, that 1.7% that you collect must be spent on police, on the code enforcement, on the park maintenance. I cannot take that money and use it on something else, because that is what the citizens voted for. And if you remember, in 2014, when I first got here, we created a special fund just to track this, just to make sure that the citizens say, well, yes, fine, you collect 7.75%, but 1.75% on top of it, you must use it to serve these or provide these services. Unless the citizens change that position, that money cannot be spent someplace else. Then, these are my expenses. As an example, I have 10 million to use to pay or to serve the police department, 3 million for SWIM, and 2.0 million for road construction, and 6 million for park maintenance. Remember, my total revenue was 21.5. My total expenses are 21. Are we in good shape? 21.5, 21 million in total. And that is what at times differentiate government function from a typical private business, or the way we run our home. How much is my salary? This is my total amount. I need to have car payment, mortgage, boom, whatever is left is my savings. Unlike government, because the citizens and the state regulation put condition on each revenue that the city levies, that if you're going to levy this, you must use it for this. Again, these are my buckets. REIT, 4.2; SWIM, 4 million; utility Prop 1, 2.8; property tax, 10.5. And these are my needs that I need to fill down there. From REIT, I can pay the construction. Unfortunately, I can only use money, the REIT money, for construction. I paid the 2 million out of there, I still have 2.2 million left. My SWIM, because the SWIM customers, yes, they need 3 million in expense, and they have 4 million in revenue. Yes, I'm able to do everything that they want and have 1 million left. Prop 1, I can use Prop 1 for park maintenance and for police. So I use the entire amount for police and use portion also for police. By the time I'm done, I cannot fund park entirely. As I mentioned, REIT can only be used for construction. Surface water management, SWIM, can only be used for benefit of SWIM customers. Prop 1 can only be used for police, courts, park maintenance, code enforcement, and law. That is what the citizens voted for. And property tax, that is the catch-all, can be used anywhere. So with the first example, like I said, we have 21.5, we have 21, boom, let's say I have $500,000 left. In this scenario, even though from a citizen's point of view, it looks like you have $500,000 left, but looking into specific, the guidelines on how you can spend each one of this, you cannot do this. So here is the example, too. 4.2 million in REIT, I can pay for the construction. That's it. So I have 2.2 million left. SWIM, yep, I can pay for the entire needs of the SWIM, and I have 1 million left. Prop 1, since I can spend Prop 1 on police and park, boom, I fund the park, the entire 2.8, spend that on park, and use property tax. So, okay, I need to fund the police, and I need to fund the park. Either I can fund entirely park maintenance, and now fund all the police, or fund all the police and now fund all the park maintenance. At the end of the day, I will have a total of 3.2 million left, but of course, I will not be able to fund entirely the park maintenance, because the money that I have left, the REIT and the SWIM, I cannot use it for park maintenance. That is the difference between capital, the restriction on the revenue source, on the specific spending. Even though from an average citizen, say, well, what do you mean? You still have 3.2 million. What do you mean you cannot fund park maintenance? Is because the money that is left belongs in a different bucket with a specific restriction on it.
Pardon?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Adey, this is a really good, really good PowerPoint. Who are the governing bodies that make all these regulations of what you can do and what you cannot do, what you can spend it and what you can't?
Okay. Some are set by the citizen. Like I said, Prop 1, the citizens of Federal Way passed it. REIT was actually a part of the RCW. When REIT revenue source was passed, I think about 26 years or so ago, is part of the RCW that is established by the state. And actually, initially, when it was first established, some of us took on the state auditor. I was one of the young accountants really eager to fight at that time. And I said, well, we should be able to use this money this way, use the money to buy computer. I was in Shiloh County then. They pulled it. Computer is a capital. That was the point we were trying to make. They said, no, 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 it's intended to be construction, infrastructure, building. So that is the state law or the city regulation are the one that restrict it. The restriction, even according to Gatsby, the restriction is actually not the one that you put on, because if you put it on, you can take it off. It has to be something put on you. That is the restriction. It is not the one put on by the council. It's the one put on council, not put on by the council. If you put it on, if you pass it, you can unpass it, so it's not a restriction. It has to be by a different body that put it on you. Like Prop 1, the citizens put it on you, and it is them that can take it off. The REIT was decided by the state. To remove it, you go back to them. You can't take it off. So out of the two examples, which one is the best one? Well, Example 1, able to fund all the program, half point five left to spend, but actually it's not conforming to the regulation. Example 2, now able to fund 2.7 out of 6 million of the park maintenance and has 3.2 million left. Example 1 is an improper use of funds, and that is part of why, thank God, in the state of Washington, when you're talking about independent auditor, the state auditor is actually very independent, because whether I like them or don't like them, they are coming back. If you have a choice of hiring a CPA, if he doesn't do your bidding, you can fire him, or next time, you shop around. I was involved in actually national discussion about independent auditor, and Washington State is actually one of the ones that actually truly have independent auditing, because like I said, whether I like Washington State Auditor's Office or not, whether they do something that I like or don't like, they are coming back by law. There was an initiative, I think about two years ago, to remove that. Some of us say, well, if the citizens only know. To remove, because we are required to be audited by the state auditor's office. If you are now required to hire your own CPA, you hire somebody that will do your bidding. So the state auditor's office come in, they do what they need to do, and could care less what I think, because it's required by the law. So they will find some of these things to be inappropriate. In conclusion, because the cities' fund belong to different buckets, cities may have excess cash and at the same time, not have funds to provide other services. Just like that example, yes, we have 3.2 million in that example, but cannot fund 2.7 because the restriction. At times, it may be correct or legal to spend city funds one way, but not necessarily the most prudent or efficient way. The restriction on the use of public fund is put in place by citizens and by law. As I said, as it was voted on by the citizens of Federal Way on Prop 1, or by the state regulation, in this case, RCW. With that, if there's any other question?
Councilmember Essefa Dawson, then Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the buckets. It gives a visual understanding and clarity to the question. So earlier, you talked about the per capita. So we were number 29, now we're number 30?
Yes.
But our population, we're at number 5, is it?
Ah, yes.
In King County?
Thank you. Actually, yes. If the City of Federal Way, in terms of size, is the fifth largest, and looking at that chart in terms of per capita of the tax revenue, we are ranked 29 in 2014, even though we are the fourth, fifth largest city in King County. Sad enough, the year following, we fell again from 29 to 30. And when we put a new report together, it will be really interesting to see. In terms of the population, here's City of Seattle, Bellevue, Kent, Brenton. So where the next in line? Fifth. But in terms of tax revenue generated, we rank per capita 29. And as I was driving around, just quickly today, one of my staff pointed out that, oh, you know, that property is exempt. Where you have, and I'm not suggesting this is right or wrong, I'm just saying part of what is affecting this tax. Where you have a block, size of apartment complex, which may worth several million, if that is exempt from tax, knowing that you have maybe about 100 people in there, that is part of what will lower your per capita rate.
I think Councilmember Essefa Dawson has a follow-up question.
Yeah, so with the bucket, you have REIT, SWIM, Proposition 1, and then property tax. So property tax is catch-all, right?
Yes, property tax is pretty much catch-all. You can do anything that is allowable, that is legal with property tax, yes.
Right. So with this shortfall, if we don't do anything about it, services could be cut?
Services will have to be cut. If you're trying to maintain, you need 6 million to maintain park, and you can only fund 3.3. It's either you reduce park service It's either you reduce park service or you reduce police in order to shift the spending to the park service. Yes, something will have to be reduced.
And these numbers are just examples? They're not-
No, I understand. I understand. So then, um, and maybe this is for you, Mayor. Do we have, like, have we made prioritization or lists if we were forced to go there in terms of how the cuts are going to take place?
Well, that's part of what we did when we presented the, uh, the fix that, that we, that the council approved. Uh, we, we took a look at, uh, those items to get us through the 2018 fix to where essential services were not cut. But in order to prevent the cutting of essential services, that's why we, uh, passed the excise tax on Lake Haven.
Right.
So, uh, we would, we would go through a prioritization if we absolutely had to.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
I mean, I think there, there are certain, obviously, you know, this council and this, and my administration makes, uh, public safety, it's absolute number one priority. Uh, so obviously that's something that we, you know, that's something we absolutely need to do. We also need to make sure that we've got good roads and infrastructure and that, you know, but ultimately, um, you know, the council has expressed its, its priorities as well. So, uh, let's hope we don't get into a situation where we have to. Uh, that, that's why we needed the sustainable revenue sources and that's why we're going through this discussion. But thank you very much. That, it, it is a, it would be a very difficult decision to say, gosh, do we, do we cut people out of parks where we're already low staffed? Do we cut somebody out of public works where we're already low staffed? We certainly do not want to cut, you know, law enforcement. That's why we had to make the difficult decision, uh, we did, uh, that the council did two weeks ago to make sure we had ongoing revenue to meet ongoing expenses. So we wouldn't have to make those excruciating decisions. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Um, Aday, this is, um, uh, you know, I, I've spent a lot of time in your office lately with Chase and yourself. Uh, and again, I've, I've appreciated all the time that, that your office has given to myself and I'm sure others on, on the dais. And certainly this time of the, of the year with the latest actions of the council, I know that there's a lot of questions that are popping up and I really appreciate you listening to us, listening to and responding to constituents when they do have questions. Um, and so I really appreciate that quite a bit. Um, you know, I, I have to first say that, um, you know, last week we had nearly 200 people in, in City Hall. Right now we have less than 50. Uh, and, uh, my words here, but unfortunately those 200 people are not hearing this. So my request is, you know, that we cut the segment of this whole YouTube video and we put it on the homepage of, you want to know more about your budget? Here's how it works. Uh, and making it easily accessible. And I appreciate the fact that you showed the public how to get to that portion of the website, but I would like to make it more in the homepage, front page, uh, you know, a segment where people can easily access this specific aspect of this presentation. I think is really important because there's a lot of lessons here that I, I believe the public, some people, uh, don't know about this and don't know that we're regulated, we have to follow things. And I think it's fair to say that, you know, governmental, um, financial records and accounting is run totally different than a business budget. Uh, and so I think there's just, uh, needs to be a lot of effort and educating. And I think I'd like to see an icon, just like we have with, uh, other items like Fight the Flight or Mayor's Memo. I'd like to make another icon that says, here's more information about your budget. Uh, so it's easily accessible. Um, and, um, and I would actually entertain the idea of, I, I enjoyed this PowerPoint, uh, but my request would be, uh, you know, in then, maybe two weeks from now, we cover this again, uh, but we focus on something different. Uh, you know, how does capital construct, um, town square, uh, the PAC and target plan to this whole thing? Uh, because I think there's a lot of education that needs to be out in the public that would help them understand. Uh, and perhaps that'll answer questions to why we do, why we, what we do. And, uh, to Councilmember Lydia Sephardosson, I, I appreciate the question that you asked. Uh, and that's, you know, it was a question I wanted to ask two weeks ago, which is, what would it look like, what would it look like if we were, if this was to pass? Uh, I'm sorry, if this was to not pass, uh, what would we have to cut? Uh, and it's, and it's an important question for me to ask because I want to show the public that this is specifically what would have looked like. Uh, and to be specific and visual, I think that's really important. Uh, so, um, I know that your staff and I have talked about that. But, um, I, you know, I, I would like to be very clear with the public saying, this is what would have happened. Uh, granted, we're not headed on that pathway, which I'm glad.
Yeah. You know, 75%, if I, if I could. Uh, we've got Councilmember Johnson, then we've got Councilmember Copeng, uh, up next. But I would say, um, you know, I think all those are fair points. We need to, Tyler, when you're out of the room, Councilmember Moore did ask that we get maybe this section on, uh, the website. Um, and, and I think that's well taken. I do think that we want to be, you know, 75% of government cost is in personnel. And it would have been a very difficult decision that I would have had to make on probably which individual positions, that these are people who have families, you know, jobs, careers, uh, you know. So I, I want to be careful about saying I would have cut this person, this person, this person. I think they would probably want to, you know, start looking for work elsewhere if they, if their mayor identifies which, which people I probably would have had to be in a position to have to lay off or which programs we would have stopped. So I want to be somewhat sensitive about that. This is, you know, this is a service delivery organization. And, um, and so when you have to cut, uh, you know, obviously it's, it's about service delivery, but these are human beings with jobs and careers and families and mortgages that they have to pay. So I want to be mindful of that. And I, and I think we would have had to go through department by department and figure out how to, how to capture that. Luckily, we didn't have to. Uh, we've got Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Copeng, and Councilmember DuKlo. Johnson, Councilmember Johnson.
First of all, Aday, just wanted to thank you for highlighting and illuminating some of the facts around, uh, the, the budget because I think it's important just to be educated as a community. And I know that we anticipate we'll have to make more difficult decisions as a council. Obviously, we had to make one a few weeks ago. Um, I did want to ask, in terms of our state tax code, if you look at it around the nation, we're dead last in terms of who has to pay the most. So folks that are considered low to middle income have to pay 17% of their income versus wealthier families. And so I wanted to ask, like, what, what can we do within our legal realm? And maybe this is a question for, for Ryan. What can we do within our legal realm as a council to advocate for changes in our tax structure? Or what can we do locally to advocate for those changes?
Mr. DuKlo to vote.
I, I, I think, uh, the, this council is doing some already. I think a part of, uh, the, at the last council meeting, I think you instructed us to modify the utility tax rebate. That is one thing within your realm that you are doing. Because that tax, you are the one that levied. Now you are saying, well, if somebody's, uh, their income fall below this, you can refund them that money back. Uh, and of course, you know, uh, take the, the Sound Transit property tax, for example. Actually, the citizens of federal way footed against Sound Transit. By past, you know, so at times for some of the statewide, there's a limit to what you can do. By the same token, we need to serve our citizens, but we need to be careful that in order to serve them, you need money. Look at the per capita, the question that, uh, Councilmember Dawson asked. The rate is so low and you still have to provide, even if you have a property that is exempt from tax, you still have to provide police service. Even when you have citizens that are getting reduced property tax, you still have to serve them. So who pay for the service that you are providing for them? So it's one of those catch 2020. So you need to have adequate enough of people paying the taxes so that you can serve everyone. If you have too many people needing the service and not able to pay for it, then how do you pay for it? I think the city government and the state government, we are in, for surprises, with the current approach of the federal government. Part of what we'll be discussing at JFA in May is now that the federal government is stopping this funding, stopping that funding, how do we fund these services? So the challenge is still coming. Because if federal government is now supporting you, then how do you serve your citizen without constantly increasing the burden on the list among us? So the, we have to balance to make sure we have enough people that are paid the tax to cover for. We can also advocate with the federal government through our legislators. We can advocate, but the state is facing the same problem. Remember what they went through with the school, uh, funding for school?
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Copeng, and then Councilmember DuKlo.
Aday, thanks for the presentation. I just, uh, wanted to echo, um, what Councilmember Moore said about getting a better understanding of capital projects. I think we look, look at the town square area as a whole. You know, the grand staircase is one of those projects that, um, if you look at the buckets that are utilized to actually build that, zero comes from the general fund. Uh, we have the REIT funding.
Lift money?
The lift funds, which is a state program that only nine cities in Washington have participated in.
Correct.
We had the foresight to be one of them.
Yes.
And we get a million dollars a year.
Yes.
If we use it.
Yes.
Okay.
And if we don't, it's said for certain number of years, you use it, you claim it, you don't use it, you lose it. You cannot roll it.
That's right. And then, uh, also the King County Mobility Grant of 500,000. So again, we're paying considerable funds, as your chart showed, to King County and to the state, out of our property tax. And part of the staff's job in getting grants is to get some of that money back into the city. And, uh, they actually do a very good job doing that. And I think, uh, you know, what, what we bent, the benefit for us is that we have a more livable city as a result of their efforts. Um, I think that that's, that needs to be said over and over again. Um, so I think, uh, developing a presentation that really explains that, I think, would be beneficial as well.
Yes, sir. And one thing I can actually mention quickly about the staircase. The city's tax is capped to increase by 1%. If you build that staircase, if the value around the staircase, if the property value increases, even though the amount of tax that the city can claim is limited, what often, what will happen is redistribution of taxes. The property values that went up so high will have an increase in property tax. You can have another property, maybe the value remain the same. Because the amount the city can claim is limited, actually their property tax may go down. Because now you are shifting portion of the tax to another group.
Again, that's, that goes to the fact that the revenue is capped at 1%. Not the interest rate. And I think that's a common misperception.
Yes.
Yep. Okay. All right. Uh, Councilmember DuKlo?
Thank you. You know, I think most people don't realize that, that cities live on a budget just like our households do. I think people think that we have access to more money than we really do. And, um, and as you're hearing tonight, there are only certain things we can collect and only so much we can collect. Um, if we wanted to raise the property tax, we would have to go to a vote of the city, um, of the citizens. And I don't think too many people would be liking that very much. We have staff, just like you folks that have jobs. You like to get a raise every year. Well, so don't the staff here? If they don't get a raise every year, they go to other cities that can afford to pay them. And we have lost several of our good staff this past year to other cities because we can't pay them appropriately. And, uh, when that happens, we have to try to find other new people and train them and then they leave us too because they get hired by another city. And so things down here at City Hall, if you come in and want, want to get a, uh, permission to do something, it's going to take you six months instead of a couple of weeks. Because we don't have staff to cover everything. Staff sometimes end up covering two or three different things. So it's, it's a balancing act, it's a budgeting thing. And, you know, people say, well, cut expenses. We have cut expenses so far that we can't cut any further. We're down to the bone. And we don't want to go through the bone. That's for darn sure. So I hoping people that are listening, are listening at this at home or see it later will understand, we are not sitting on a bank of money that we don't want to spend. We're trying to save what little we have and we're trying to keep the services that you want so much to keep our, our city a great place to live and to raise your children. And, uh, if we have a windfall, that would be wonderful. We would, we would be very delighted about that. We don't go around raising taxes. We can't raise our property tax. That has to go to a vote of the people. And I'm sure none of you would vote for that. So that's the dilemma that we face and, and we're trying to do the best that we can while also trying to give you what you want to have for your city to provide for you. So thank you.
Councilmember Tran, then Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Aday, thank you for this, uh, information. Um, I think this is the key of things that, in my opinion, should be shared with the public more often. Because I, I can tell you that there's a lot of misinformation and confusion out there about the, the budget. For, for those who don't deal with the city budget or governmental agency budget on a daily basis, it is very complex, it's very difficult to understand. So the more, uh, of this type of information to be shared with the public, I think is the better. So, thank you.
Yes. Uh, just to, to expand on what Mayor said, I think before we start looking at budget cut in the department, I want to remind you that out of general fund, you fund more than three-quarter of community projects. There may be review in case. I mean, there's almost three-quarter of a million out of general fund that you spend on boys and girls, Catholic community, uh, communities in school, crisis clinic, that you fund, that may have to be reviewed.
Okay. Uh, we've got, I, I want to be mindful of the folks that have signed up for public comment. Um, and, uh, so we've got Councilmember Moore, but we've, we've got, we've got to get to the point in the meeting where people who've come here. And then, so Councilmember Moore, and then Deputy Mayor Hinda.
Yeah, and I totally respect that, Mr. Mayor. And I think there's a lot of questions on our end and, and, um, but, um, moving forward, uh, you know, um, uh, my colleague to the, to my left, Councilmember DuKlo, uh, she talked, she started talking about cuts. Uh, and again, towards the future, maybe another PowerPoint, uh, i- i- if, uh, if we, I'd like to kind of see, I want us to explore cuts, you know, to, to the public, just like in this way that you've done. Uh, you know, and the reason why I, I would like to request for that is, is that I think I've heard a lot of citizens saying, well, you can cut more, you know? So I think having a PowerPoint, Mr. Mayor, and just saying, uh, here's her, here's what we've cut and just kind of get a deeper look into that. And I'm sure, and I'm sure we've talked about, I know we've talked about.
You're going to hear about something coming up here real soon.
Right. So I think, you know, something visual that we can kind of continue on the quest of educating. And, uh, and again, you know, the, uh, in my closing statement here, uh, you know, there's a lot of room for, and, and again, it's going to take a little bit of staffing time, I understand. But my advice is, uh, I'd like us to utilize technology and, um, uh, utilize technology for us to bring, uh, bring awareness. Uh, you know, because I think, you know, if you look at our social media, there, there's a lot of questions that are popping up. And how do we address the very questions that are coming from our audience? Uh, I think that's really, really important. And again, I, I think there's a huge opportunity waiting for us to utilize technology and answering questions. And then the last point, I, I had to, uh, uh, you know, with all due respect, I want to remind the mayor that, that I would like to see town hall sessions, uh, relatively soon, just on our budget. So.
Once we get past this section, I've got a town hall meeting I'll be talking about in about two minutes.
Thank you.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Hinda?
Thank you. Aday, um, for the utility re, uh, tax rebate, do you know how many, the percentage of our taxpayers will qualify for that?
Uh, I don't have the information on the age of our constituency. But I think if- I don't have the information on the age of our constituency, but I think if we made the information known and the, I think you once suggested that we put, which we did at that time, post, post the information at Walmart where it is accessible, that may increase the exposure. And also, I think with these excise tax on the water and soil may actually maybe may increase the number of people that would need it. But based on the experience, like I pointed out, you know, and Chase also pointed out, you are looking at $3, $4 every other month. So when the citizen go through this rebate, so at the end of the day, I mean, maybe 70 bucks is a lot of money, maybe 30 bucks is a lot of money, but the amount that may come out of it, but at least it will be there. I don't have information on the age of our citizens and how many of them are poor that will qualify for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Aday. Actually, Aday, the very next thing is my mayor's emerging issues and report. First item on there is the 2019 and 2020 budget calendar. And there it is right there. Let me just go through it real quick. Special meeting Tuesday, June 5th, 2018, 5:30 PM. It's prior to a regular council meeting. Budget discussion and presentation, capital replacement. Special meeting on Wednesday, June 20th, 5:30 PM. Budget discussion, presentation, budget goal setting. Regular meeting Tuesday, September 4th, 2018. That's, at that time, I'll present my proposed biennial budget to council. And then we've got special meetings in Wednesday, September 26th at 5:30 PM. And, and so we've got the whole calendar right there. Are we going to have this calendar available on the website?
Yes. I also have extra copy out here, too.
All right. And we'll make sure that we, that we, you know, get, make sure that we publicize these individually as well before they occur. And they'll be posted regularly. Okay. Thank you very much, Aday. Good job. So while we're talking about these biennial budget meetings, which will obviously be open to the public and which will be taking public comment, we will be having our spring Neighborhood Connection meeting. It's what I was just referencing a few moments ago. That's where myself and city, city staff and the city council go out, out into the community, essentially City Hall comes out to the community. The, the Spring Neighborhood Connection meeting, or essentially Town Hall meeting, will be on Thursday, April 26th at 6:00 PM. That's Thursday, April 26th at 6:00 PM at Twin Lakes Elementary School. And we'll have presentations and we'll likely have a presentation on budget issues. And we'll hear from Marwan and, and what's going on with Public Works. We'll hear from the Police Department. And most importantly, we're going to hear from the people that we work for, which is the public. So, and that will be televised as well. So those are very important meetings that we have. We've gotten, at the first year as mayor, we did six of those in that first year. That was probably, it was, it was a few. Now we're focusing on one in the spring and usually one in the fall. So we'll have, we'll make sure that we go out into the public. We may pick up a third one, time permitting. All right. Now, moving on to, you could see the picture there. We had the, Yarden, I'll just go ahead and, I'll just go ahead and give the report. Report on Highline Forum. We had that meeting here last week, on, on March 28th. It was a great opportunity. You see the picture there of representatives of the Highline Forum, which are essentially the South County cities that are affected by the airport, Burien, Sea-Tac, Normandy Park. They elected the leadership. You also had the folks from the port. And I had an opportunity to present, talked about things that were happening here and said, in the City of Federway, not just economic development, but also about things that we're doing to address quality of life issues that are arising as a result of airline traffic and airline noise, the progress that we're working on right now with the Safe and Quiet Skies Initiative, where the report on that is being finalized and, and we'll be ready to issue that here very quickly. And they're working very hard on that. And the, I've got representatives on the START Committee, three representatives, which is another regional airport noise committee, and the work is starting to progress on the, on the, what's the regional committee? PSRC, Puget Sound Regional Committee, of which I said on the executive board. And thanks to the testimony that I, and the insistence that I gave at the last, or the second to last PSRC meeting, they did change the scope of their survey to include what is the eventual maximum capacity of that airport for livability and, and the effect on the area communities. And that had not been involved in that. So there's also, I do want to say that the scoping of the Sustainable Airport Master Plan, or what they refer to as the SAM, actually, the scoping of that actually doesn't start until.
Again, June, probably.
That, Yarden Wydenfelder, our senior policy advisor, says that the scoping of that, of that, of that study, the strategic, the long-term airport master plan, won't even begin until June. So we're right on target. I know that there were some concerns about where Federway was at in all this, but we're obviously taking a, a leadership role by hosting the, the Highline Forum and, and also the things that we're doing and, and that report will be generated. So thank you, Yarden, for your work on that and.
I might want to say it's on the YouTube channel as well.
Oh, yeah. That, that meeting, I made sure, right before the meeting, thank you, Yarden, that's a great point. Before the meeting started, actually, we, it was right here in the council chambers, and it dawned on me that I said, hey, we've got this, this meeting that people in our city really care about. I told our IT person, Thomas Fitchner, I said, turn on the, turn on the recording stuff. Let's make sure this gets on TV. So anybody who's interested in seeing that meeting and the testimony and the exchanges that occurred and the citizens that were here that spoke can, they'll be, it'll be regularly played on, on television, just like our Neighborhood Connection meeting will be. All right. We had, the same day as the Highline Forum, we actually had Congressman Adam Smith here for a town hall meeting. It was good to see our congressman here in this very room. And we saw, it was a packed room to talk about those issues, and he did a great job talking about the issues that Congress is facing at this time. We've got Parks Appreciation Day on April 21st. And Steve, instead of going through, let's see here, we're going to have a council meeting prior to, it'll be, why don't we do that presentation on the Tuesday before Parks Appreciation Day, if that's okay? We've got a lot of folks that, that wish to talk to us, and I don't want to delay them too much. So thank you very much for your, for your patience, Stephen. I appreciate it. We've got Steve Eiker, our deputy parks director, that was ready to give that presentation. Now, for the most important part of, of our meeting, hearing from the people that we work for, the public. I've got, I've got a couple of pink sheets here. I'll call your name out and, and then I'll try to do a few, call them out so you can get ready to, people can figure out who's on deck. I hope I can pronounce this. It's Robert Sagan. Come on, come on down, sir. And then we've got Robert Morrison, who's on deck, Dana Holloway. Skyman is back, Skylar Nichols, and then Nick Wilson and some others. Sir, Robert Sagan.
I just wanted to talk to you guys about a problem I've been having in my neighborhood with the homeless. And behind my house is 320th and the Federway Library. And just yesterday, I got a guy in the backyard injecting heroin. And these guys are crazy. I mean, these aren't normal citizens, you know? My wife is scared for her life. My kids are freaked out. I don't even want to go to Safeway anymore. You know, even a guy my size, I feel I need to be armed to go to these places. The Federway Library is just disgusting. You know, I don't want my kids going in there. It's, and I don't know what to do, what would help. You know, you guys are talking about cutting funding and maybe they have too many benefits that they're receiving here, so that's drawing them into Federway. And I've been here my whole life, 38 years, and it's just getting really bad, you know? And I don't know what to do. I've, I've had a lot of help from the police officers. You guys got a special unit for the homeless, and they have been awesome. I sent you guys an email. I'm sure you guys all got it.
Yep.
I'm just looking for any help, any light at the tunnel. I'm not sure where to go with it.
You came to the right place. Are you done, Robert?
Yeah.
Okay. So you came to the right place. Actually, I just spoke with one of your neighbors, just, actually, just in the past couple of days, about exactly your neighborhood. We had, there was, one of your neighbors had, heard that they were walking their dog, it was a person named Leah. Do you know Leah?
No.
Right, just right down the street where you're at, about, I see you're about 8th and, anyway, you're right in that area.
Yep.
So they, in the early morning hours, they heard crunching around in that, in that green belt right there.
Yeah, yep.
And that's where we sent, I immediately got the chief and the deputy chief, Steve Neal, who's in charge of that task force, and we cleared that individual out. Now, what you probably saw today and yesterday was that individual, or those individuals and all of that trash that was pulled out of the woods right there on that.
Oh, that's down the street from me, yeah.
Yeah, right there on 320th.
Uh-huh.
So you probably saw that right on 320th, right there between First Avenue and Fifth Avenue. And so that, that is an area we're cleaning out. So we, we just, this week, within the past couple of days, we cleaned out that green belt. So what I'm going to ask is, is Kyle still here, chief? I, what I'd like you to do, we've got another deputy chief here, Kyle Sumter, and we're going to get your information. We're, I've got your contact information here, but what I'd like to do is set up a special communication with you and a deputy chief here to wherever you see something, let us know, and we'll take care of it in real time.
Okay.
Okay? So while we're talking about potential budget cuts, the number one priority of this city is to make sure that it's safe and clean. And where we've got, we do not allow illegal camping in the city. Where we see it, we will clean it up. If it's on public property, people are trespassing. If it's on private property, people are trespassing. So we're not allowing that. So we have a zero tolerance for this. So, Robert, thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. And then Kyle's gonna, Kyle's in the back. Robert, right there. Okay, thank you very much. All right, Robert Morrison.
Hello, Jim Farrell and the rest of the council. My concern is for the City of Federway, to keep the place safe. And the, the street that I'm talking about is from 317th going up to 28th Avenue and There are some new housing down the way that the sidewalk from the random bout comes up so far that it cuts off. And people, if there's any wheelchairs down there, they cannot get over the field that's so rocky to the other side of the sidewalk that keeps on going to the bus stop towards 28th Avenue. And my safety is, I mean, my concern is, I, I would see that that sidewalk could be continued so the people can wheelchair up to their friends' apartment if possible. And then those, those numbers that I put on there on the list are the light poles that, that are dim. And from 28th Avenue South, across the street from the Steel Lake Park, there is a light pole right there without a light arm on it that could make the, that corner a lot brighter, which a corner should be according to law. And there's other lights down the way that could be checked so it's, so it's brighter down that way. And where those sidewalks cut off, right now could be a bus sign so those people that live in the, those apartments don't feel like they're stranded. So they're, so they can get metro service and access service.
Okay. Thank you, Robert.
Welcome.
Marwan, would you please have somebody take a look at the light at 312th and 28th, right there by our, our yard there? And then let's talk about sidewalks. Thank you, Robert. We'll get back in touch with you.
Okay. And there's, there, the city park that's on the corner of 316th and 28th Avenue South, to make a, a place look better, it could use more grass in it because right now it looks like moss.
Okay.
And lots of people tell me that they could use hibachis by the, by the picnic tables and more people will use them then.
Okay. Thank you, Robert.
Welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Dana Holloway and then Skyman, who we've not heard from in a long time. Dana?
Hi. Good evening. I'm Dana Holloway. I was going over the city's 2017, 2018 biennial budget. It's a big hot item. And I found an item that may be a reason for the current budget shortfall of the $854,000 or at least a contributing to the shortfall. And I didn't see it mentioned in any of the presentations by the finance department. I need to say that I do not understand budgets and I don't like budgets, but I'm still trying to understand them. I felt I should point out what I found and let the mayor of the city council respond, not necessarily now, but just, maybe I'm way off base. The budget showed revenue of $9,000, $930,000 for 2017 and $930,000 again for 2018 for, coming from the Transportation Benefit District. The mayor and the city council approved the budget in December of 2016, showing revenue from a transportation benefit district, but the city did not have a transportation benefit district at the time the budget was approved. So at the January 17th, 2017 city council meeting, there was agenda item 6A, public hearing, was to establish a transportation benefit district. First reading passed unanimously. As a point of information that some people may not understand, the created, if they created a transportation benefit district, it would add a City of Federway specific license fee of, they were talking about $15 or $20 per car or vehicle for the first year, but the fee could be increased in future years. At the next city council meeting, February 7th, 2017, the city council meeting, agenda item 8 ordinance, second reading, to establish the transportation benefit district failed. Yes. Okay. I was one of the residents who spoke against the transportation benefit district that would have imposed those vehicle license fees. And I believe it failed due to public outcry for having additional $15 or $20 added to their license fees about the same time as ST3 was happening. When trying to establish a, when trying to establish a transportation benefit district failed, those funds or revenues were never generated, leaving the budget without those dollars, which would have been $1,860,000 over those two years. It doesn't seem like good business practices to approve a budget showing revenue from a source that was not in existence. I look forward to the council's response because, again, I don't understand budgets. Thank you.
Well, you were very persuasive, Dana, because I think everybody on this council remembers the, the forcefulness of your comments and heartfelt comments. And we, and, and, you know, you lead with your heart, and sometimes I do, I do that as well. And so it was actually your comments and some of your neighbors' comments that we were planning on doing, the council voted for that, and we planned on having, the council planned on having that $937,000 per year in the budget. But we listened to the citizens, the council listened to the citizens and pulled that out. And so therefore, that did leave a hole. And so that's, that's where we find ourselves. And we had, we had to come up with some other things, but that's, that is actually, I've actually said that, actually, we can't, can't go back to the well. But, but that's exactly what happened, and that's why when we were, when I was doing that last budget, I actually proposed the excise tax on Lake Haven at that time, and the TBD was put in place of that, and then the TBD got pulled out. So that's why we find ourselves in this situation in large part. Councilmember Copeng?
Just wanted to say that the budget was actually approved in 2016.
Yeah.
So it was approved and that was written. And then in January, when we were actually looking at the final details, that's when it was pulled out. But the budget had already been published. So that's a, but again, I think for us, we are very sensitive to the, the needs of the community, and ST3 passage was going to just cause the TBD to be a pile on that none of us were excited about. Thank you.
Turns out we needed that 900,000. That's why we did what we, that's why the council did what they needed to do two weeks ago. Skyman, Skylar Nichols. And then Nick Wilson and then Garrett. Are you, are you guys? and then Garrett. Are you guys all together?
Pretty much.
All right. Skyman, it's good to see you.
Greetings and salutations again, Federalway City Council. Skyman here, a local, real-life superhero, though I've moved down to Auburn where I've had better chances at resources and employment lately. But what brought me up here to Federalway tonight was brouhaha over the homeless population here in Federalway. It's encroaching upon public and private property. I understand that. And I know that illegal trespassing is illegal.
Right.
However, these are human beings we're talking about. Living, breathing folks just like you and me, who have everyday struggles, who have needs. Of course, their needs are a little greater than ours because they don't have a roof over their head. They have a tarp, they have a tent, a piece of cardboard. That's no way to live. That's no way to sleep. And believe it or not, a few months ago, I was that way. I was homeless, too. And I understand the plight of homelessness. However, what brought me up here, there was a Facebook page, Federalway Community Watch, and I tried defending my point of view and was just lambasted, attacked for trying to defend homeless people. It was just immensely depressing and disappointing that Federalway people don't have a heart, it seems. Community outreach, police officers are not social workers. Big, long reply of, let the police handle it, let them kick them out to the curb. Well, then where are they going to go? Be creative in your outreach. Have, okay, needle pickup is huge. Have the hospital put out a red box, a red needle box, near some of these encampments. I'm pretty sure it'll get filled up within a day. But that'll take care of the needle problem, or at least, that's an idea. The Federalway Day Center, great place. I've been there a couple times. Just like the Auburn Day Center, they provide resources, they provide services for the homeless. So don't just turn a blind eye to these people. Don't just say that they're a public nuisance. Don't just say that, oh, NIMBY, not in my backyard. I understand he was encroaching on guy's private property, and he's afraid to take his kids out. Well, that's understandable. But again, these are human beings. Have a little more compassion, Federalway. Thank you.
Thank you, Skyman. And just to let you know, we did start just last, I think it was last council meeting, we did announce a comprehensive homeless task force of 31 members that'll be meeting twice a month until December, and they'll be giving a series of recommendations. So thank you very much. Nick Wilson?
Hi. Last time I was up here, I believe I was asking about a particular road. I sent some photos. Just curious, what was your guys' thought on those roads when I sent an email, just curious? And the ones that was on, I think it was 21st from 333rd to 330th, I believe?
Marwan, do you recall? Before we get Marwan, go ahead and say your whole comment, and then we'll get into the staff reaction. So what else would you, do you remember the exact location?
I think it was 21st or 20th. It was right behind 330th and 336th, I believe. It was like right in that area, behind Christish Faith Center. I know there was, it's crazy, there was like a group of kids one day, and they could have actually gotten hit because there was nothing there, you know? There was just a plain, straight road. There was no concrete with a white line. There was no sidewalk or anything. With the weather getting nice, you know, it's a good likely chance of an accident happening. So I know I sent you guys photos a while back. I know you probably just saw that, ooh, this looks pretty risky right here. I know it's been a while. What did you guys think of them overall? Did you see them by any chance or not?
Well, let me, it looks like Deputy Mayor Honda has something. Go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you for sending those photos. I did look at those, and I do drive that road.
Okay, thanks.
And I don't know what the answer is because that is very narrow. There are no sidewalks, there's ditches.
Yeah.
And I don't see any space to make sidewalks there. So, but I did, I did look at them, and you have a very valid concern. There's several roundabouts that people need to go around, and they're not big roundabouts, but there's not a lot of space to go around those either.
Yeah.
But thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah. Also, I have a question from our police as well. Would it be possible, I'd say probably around 6:00 to 7:00 o'clock in the evening, actually, when traffic gets really bad, because I almost got killed, actually, recently, would it be possible, probably when the weather gets nice, if we could have one cop patrol, a crosswalk, I guess you could say, or intersection for maybe like an hour, half hour, on 356 to, I think, 26th Avenue, it's like right before you go to Todd Beamer, by any chance? Would that be possible?
Well, go ahead and finish your comments, and then I'll ask the staff. So you're between 356th and 21st. You're interested in some safety in that area?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
When the weather is nice.
Any other comments?
No, that'll be it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Nick. All right. Marwan, do you recall the area?
Yes, Mayor, I do. And I believe we responded on this issue. But the good news is that we have a private developer who's going to be doing townhome at the corner, actually, at the both corner of 21st and 20th Avenue. That project, at the present time, in the permitting stage. And as soon as they go to construction, the city requirement for them to construct sidewalk on 330th, on both sides, and on 20th Avenue fronting their property. So you're going to have some sidewalk system within that area. As to the rest of the roadway on 20th, all of our sidewalk go through a priority listing, trying to figure out the amount of money we have and where would be the best place for us to spend that money. And both of those projects did not rank high enough, just because the expense to do the sidewalk, as Deputy Mayor Honda highlighted, it's extremely expensive, and we are not able to get any grant funding for those particular location. So, as I said, hopefully by the end of the year, that project will move forward and will get some sidewalk on 20th and South 330th Street.
Okay, thank you. All right, Garrett Frennels, and then Don Coggins, and Dennis Lamont Stiles, and then Mark Green. Garrett?
Hello, my name is Garrett Frank. That's okay. What I wanted to talk about today is about the homeless, but it's particularly pertaining to homeless veterans. My main issue that I find depressing and not okay, whether we can really help with this more than I'm sure we already are or not, is they get deployed to foreign countries, and they sacrifice a lot. They can't see their families. They can't come home. They can't see their grandsons or granddaughters get married. They can't visit their parents for holidays because they want to make America a safe country. And they're doing that by going to other countries and trying to not get killed every single day. So, because they sacrifice so much so we can have a home, so we're not a war zone, because that could very well easily happen if they didn't sacrifice their lives and their freedom and themselves to get deployed, then why should veterans who sacrifice so much come home and not have a home to come home to occasionally, sometimes? And yet, they're one of the only reasons why we do have a home. I don't find that fair. I mean, I know we do things to help veterans the best we can, but I think there's more that we could do. For example, you know, if you serve the military, you have a lot of skills. You have a lot of skills in fire, safety, medical, depending on your job you did, mechanics. So why don't we advertise for, put advertisements for people who need mechanics, who need medical personnel for something, who need security officers? Because a lot of veterans have those skills from training, advertise for them, for homeless veterans, and then veterans can apply to those jobs, and that way it at least gives them some substantial income. And maybe they can save it up and use it for a cheap apartment or something for income-limited pedestrians. And that way, then some of the veterans can go off the streets, get into a job, get into a home. I think, you know, that would be a good start to helping the homeless population, at least in the veteran area, get into a job, use the skills that they have to help us, and we're helping them too, by giving them a job, giving them a place to live, giving them money that they can work for. Because I just don't think it's fair that after everything that they've done, why they should come home and be homeless when it's because of them that we have a home. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. All right. Thank you, guys. Don Coggins?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. I'm here today to talk about communication. It's kind of a little bit, a couple people stole my thunder a little bit earlier, but after the meeting, I was here at the meeting a couple weeks ago, and obviously, there was a lot of people here and upset. And afterwards, you know, I was thinking about it that night a lot. And I was thinking, you know, for an average person in the city, it seemed like the issue kind of sprung out of nowhere within like a few weeks, and then it was over. I'm sure that's not how it happened. I'm sure there was plenty of notification, and you know, all the, everything was handled properly. But you know, that's kind of how it seemed. And I think I've spoken to a few of you over the years about communication, and I feel that, you know, we have made some improvements, you know, but I think, you know, there's still more we can do to bring the public along in the vision. And I just want to give a couple examples of, you know, in the absence of communication or information, you know, rumors happen. And one of the things, you know, that happened, like after the last meeting, the homelessness coalition was announced, and there was some rumors that those people were going to be paid. And, you know, also came up in those discussions that, you know, people don't realize that the commissions and the committee members are volunteers. You know, a lot of people don't know that. So things like that, you know, just, I think, you know, you're all in tune with all these things. Maybe you don't think, you know, hey, people just don't, you know, don't know these things. And, you know, one of the things I know that happened to me recently, and I'm fairly well-informed as a citizen, is I read about the million dollars that had been approved for the PAC kitchen. And at the time, I was like, well, that's kind of weird. And so I tried to do some research, and I was like, what's that about? It just got, you know, built. And I couldn't find the answer. I found the answer last council meeting. You, Mr. Mayor, mentioned it, that that was just for work that had already been done. But things like that, you know, I think turn into bigger negative things. And so, and not everyone has time to come, or interest, frankly, to come to the council meeting, or even watch hours-long council meetings. So I just want to make a suggestion that I'm glad we're going to be having, you know, more two-way communication, but to maybe just, you know, put little things out on social media, just a little blurb here and there, nothing too long, you know, and maybe a link to something, you know, like, for example, the presentation Doug Baxter gave earlier, very awesome, very informative, you know, I'd be, love to see that on social media, just like click the link, see what's happening with violence prevention, et cetera. And maybe also some meeting highlights or something, something like that, little, just little snippets to get the public involved.
Thank you, Don.
Thanks.
I know, that's what I was talking about, about chasing that misinformation, especially about the kitchen, you know, issue with the PAC. And it's like, boy, once a piece of information gets out there, it just goes, it's like wildfire. And I think there are some statistical studies, or some psychological studies that talk about sometimes misinformation is remembered, sometimes actually more than than actual information. And once that information gets out there, it's nearly impossible to pull it back. And so it's just about how we worded that. So for those listening at home, we had asked for a capital budget increment last year with the legislature, and then it got stalled in the capital budget because they weren't able to come up with a capital budget. And so we were like, they passed one chamber, but didn't pass the Senate. And so we, you know, we were just waiting, essentially, for that logjam in the state senate to get resolved. It did get resolved. We ended up getting it through, and then we, and so we ended up building the kitchen and just footed the bill ourselves. So now that is reimbursing ourselves. But the language that was used is that we were essentially, you know, I think, I think it was that we were retrofitting or remodeling the kitchen and the PAC. Well, that would be pretty asinine if we built the building and within a year, you know. So that's the kind of thing where it gets people upset, and they're upset for no reason because that's not what happened. So anyway, we got another million dollars from the state that should be a great thing and celebrated for our community. Now we've raised $25 million for our $32 million PAC. But what's out there is that somehow we rebuilt this kitchen, which we didn't. So anyway, that's just something that we, I think communication is a very important thing, and we just need to just harp on those facts. Okay, thank you very much, Don. Dennis Lamont Stiles, then Mark Green, who's waited patiently. Thank you, Mark. And then Steve Smith.
Good evening, council members. My name is Dennis Stiles. I wanted to get up here and talk about an event that we have going on, but being at the council meeting is just so many different issues that's going on. I'm just like, in my head, like, remember that, talk about that. And you don't have that much time. So one of the things that I see that is being said over and over again is like communication and getting these issues out to the public, and effectively getting the voice so you guys can do your job for the public. Recently, we just started a media group called Rugged Genius. We're doing a talent show on the 14th at Conunson. And basically, it's a positive media group that we thought, we were like, okay, there's a lot of negative things out there that you could watch. We want to balance it with some positive stuff, and local positive stuff involving the youth. So basically, we're trying to figure out how to get the youth involved in city government and their community, and kind of like control the narrative of how, of what they see, is basically what the idea is about. But just real quick, like, a lot of this stuff, when, I don't know your name, when you did the budget, and I'm just thinking to myself, like, if you were a 17 or 18-year-old kid, would you understand what he just said? And the first thing that came to my mind was like, man, let's link him with some, like a youth person, and do an interview, and have him explain it to them, to where, and then you guys have a channel. You got a Channel 21 that you could put this stuff on the local channel and gather the community through these different resources that we have. You have Conunson, you have all these different resources that we have. And I'm not going to say they're just sitting there, but some people don't know that these opportunities are there. And so my plight would be just more so, even if it's not us, we interviewed Jesse for our platform, and it was just more so just to let the public know, if you didn't know, who he was, where he comes from, things that, I have three minutes, so I really can't say everything that I would like to say. So how do you say that? Where do you say this at? And so with these different community meetings that you guys put on, we just want to put it out there and try to get the youth more involved. Another thing is the situation with the homeless. Like, this is stuff that we deal with every single day. If you're out here, I see Councilmember Du Close, Martin, I actually saw you at the mall with your family. You got a beautiful family. I'm just laughing to myself, like, this is cool. You know, like, you see your mayor, you see your city council members out, and it's like, man, you know, this is our community, and we want to partake in it. And we can't forget about the homeless people. You know, the homeless people that are coming here, they need help. And some of the people that I've talked to, they're like, man, you know, I didn't want to be homeless. It's just circumstances and things. So I just was like, man, what can we do? How can we have this conversation to address community issues and incorporate the youth? So that's just my, if you get a chance, come to the show. It's going to be a nice show. It's family-oriented, it's PG, and...
Lamont, give the details. When and where?
Oh, so it's Saturday, April 14th, at Conunson Theater from 6:30 to 8:30. Contact myself. I work in the mall, so you can come into the mall, to Jay Kinlo. I see you walk around every now and then. So it's just, like I said, it's cool to just see your representatives walking around and come in, feel a part of it. You know, I'm texting somebody as I'm sitting here, like, man, you should be here.
Saturday, April 14th?
April 14th, 6:30 to 8:30 at Conunson Theater.
Okay. All right.
I'm sorry, is there a cost?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. So it's $5 for children 11 and under, and $10 for adults.
Right. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. All right. We're looking forward to that. All right, Mark Green, and then Steve Smith, and then I'm out of pink sheets. And then I'm out of pink sheets.
It's been a long time since the miracle of Alaska, the year 2000, when I wasn't just a candidate for office, as some in the media have led you to believe, but I won the last ever Alaska Open Primary for the United States House of Representatives, a statewide office. It's been a long time since San Diego Marine Corps Boot Camp, nineteen seventy-two, and since my political coming of age in nineteen sixty-four Michigan, and since speaking here, but I'm back again, reporting for duty, Semper Fi, always faithful. Now, some will try to divide us by saying the United States isn't really a nation, but a globalist rallying center, to be run by the radical left intelligentsia and twenty-first century technocrats, and who use divisive slogans and policies that emphasize our differences. But this is a nation, and one that has melded together through tough times and through the strength of a single American culture. There are many threads to that culture, and they sometimes go at cross purposes, but everybody counts, and we were all created by the glory of God. And in his divine glory, he decided to tear down our towers of arrogance, and gave us a very defined moral code that's not easy to follow. And of course, I am not going to question his infinite wisdom. What the Titans of High Tech and their radical ref, excuse me, what the, and their la, and their radical left friends want, or for that matter, what the hard right wants, is not something we should ascribe to, if it's at odds with God's infinite wisdom, or at odds with the furtherance of the common man. Because call me crazy, but I think there is a happy medium between radical quote-unquote utopia, led by the so-called best and the brightest, and its polar opposite, Darwinian ideology, where every man is a nation unto himself, and although we have natural rights that belong to no one, including the government. I can't finish, but thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Mark. Steve Smith.
Good evening, Mayor, and Deputy Mayor and City Council. Actually, very quickly, I'm here to invite you down to, first I have to say the Federalway Noon Kwanas, because I'll be fine tomorrow if I don't say that. We are having the Salmon Bake, July twenty-seventh, from Forty-Eight, at Steel Lake. Please get that on your calendar, we invite you down. We are still looking for servers, so I'm quickly to, to take your volunteership, but we do like, it's a huge event. My goal is to beat last year's chairman, we won't mention her name at all in any way, shape, or form, but to beat how many people. And I want to give a shout-out to the Chamber of Conference. Yesterday, we just sent out three hundred and forty-eight invitations to local businesses to participate in the Salmon Bake this year, so, thanks.
Thank you, Stephen. Deputy Mayor, how many, she was the chair last year, just in case anybody...
Over nine hundred dinners were served, and I would like him to beat that record, because it's a great record to beat. And so, good luck. You know, I'll be there helping, and I'll find a way to find you tomorrow, anyway.
Was last year the sixtieth anniversary?
It was the sixty-first.
Sixty-first, okay. It is, you know, just put that on your calendar, you guys, it is absolutely an amazing opportunity. See so many people from the community, right there on, on Steel Lake, and, and it's a, it's a great opportunity to talk to your neighbors, and it's just good fish, so put me down, I'll serve, I love to serve, I won't sneak extra pieces of salmon.
From four to six?
I promise.
From four to six?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Put him down.
Yeah, put me down, put me down, all right. Okay, that's the last pink sheet that I have. Thank you, everybody, for your comments, we very much appreciate them. And, and we do, you know, I know, when I, I remember when I was on the council, it always struck me as really odd that people would have very heartfelt comments, and we'd just stare at them, and then we would, would move on. I really, we do try to, to address them as much as we can here, I think that's a very important thing to do. To the extent that if, if you want additional follow-up, shoot us an email, and, and, and we'll do everything we can to make sure that we follow up. All right, now moving on to the consent agenda. These items have already gone through committee, and can be approved with one vote. I'll go ahead and read the items and ask if a, a separate consideration is we needed or desired by a council member. The four items are: Item A, the minutes for the March twentieth, two thousand and eighteen regular and special meeting minutes; Item B, the monthly financial report, January and February two thousand and eighteen; Item C, vouchers, February two thousand and eighteen; Item D, OCE or OSA, TDS seven fifty, large format plotter, maintenance amendment. Council members, are there, is there a particular item that you would want pulled for separate consideration? All right, hearing none. Deputy Mayor Honda, do you have a motion?
I move approval of Items A through D on the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the matter's passed unanimously. All right, now on to Item Six, Council Business, confirmation of the mayor's appointment of the Public Works Director. So, Tyler, if you could, got a great picture there of EJ. EJ, if you could please approach the, the podium. EJ Welsh, Walsh is, currently serves as the Deputy Public Works Director. He's responsible for Surface Water, Solid Waste, Development Services, and Fleet Divisions. EJ has consistently been recognized for achievements and key successes to advance the City of Federalway, including managing the on-time and on-budget construction, we needed to underline and bold and italicize those, those words, on-time and on-budget construction of the new Performing Arts and Events Center, leadership on behalf of the City of Federalway with Sound Transit, and many other initiatives and projects. And I want to tell you, let's go back just about that. I want to tell you that EJ saved our city probably hundreds of thousands of dollars in his management of the Performing Arts and Events Center. And I have to tell you that when we were going through this process, and we were talking about, at once we green-lighted the project back in January of two thousand and fourteen, one of the things I thought at that time is, we need to have somebody on-site every day, because there's just, they're just too important, and you don't want to get down to the, to the end of, of a project or at critical stages, and not have the ability to adjust things. And, and we really felt it was critically important for this community to come on-time and on-budget. And so, EJ, the, the people, and I, I say this to him all the time, and he, I think he's getting a little bit uncomfortable, but every time he's in my office, I say, the people of this community owe you a debt of gratitude. The picture you see there is, right before we did, that's that beam signing ceremony, and they've got a tree there, and that's when we signed that beam. Okay, now let's, now let's switch. Okay, so EJ graduated from Lehigh University, is a graduate there of the School of Engineering. He started his career in the private sector, working for civil engineering firm focused on planning and design, owner's construction representation, and municipal representation. Leaving the private sector, EJ transitioned to Public Works within city government. So, he's been, and I'm not going to read all of that, but within the eastern United States, and Ohio, and New Jersey, and Pennsylvania, he has testified as an expert, and, and had been admitted as an expert for multiple counties and planning commissions, and, and, and just a number of different zoning hearings, and, and times in which his expertise was relied upon. EJ is married to Rachel, and she's here in the audience today. Hi, Rachel, thank you for coming. And father of two children, Eddie and Ethan, and on weekends in the winter, you could typically find him on skis, either with his wife and children, or acting as an instructor and board member for the Summit at Snoqualmie Volunteer Ski Patrols on behalf of the National Ski Patrol Organization. It is without hesitation that I have forwarded my recommendation that EJ be our next Public Works Director, but that actually, we have, actually haven't even really gone there yet, and that's that, something that we, we've been all in denial, and I know EJ is as, as well, that Marwan Salum, our longtime employee, who served as Deputy Public Works Director for years and years, and who was so, we were so fortunate to get him to be our Director of Public Works back now four years ago, for the City of Federalway. Marwan is retiring in September of this year, and let's give Marwan a big round of applause. Thank you, Marwan. I, you know, we really rely on him, I'm gonna, even that situation we were talking about, Robert, we were talking about that situation where we had all the trash on the, on the, on the street there on Three Twentieth. It was, so we've got the public, we've got the police chief, a deputy chief of police, a couple of commanders out in the field, and we're all trying to figure out, where are we going to put this stuff? What are we going to do? And who comes to, comes to the aid? Public Works. Public Works, you know, showed up with multiple trucks, and, and got that, and, and got that, you know, got that stuff off of the street, and in a safe location where we can kind of sort all that out, and protect that property, and protect, protect the community. With that being said, it is without, and so I had to set the stage here, but it's because of that retirement that I, it is my happy duty to nominate for approval by the council, hopefully, EJ Walsh as our next Public Works Director. So with that, I've given the presentation. Council members, are there any questions? All right. Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you. I move approval of the appointment of EJ Walsh as the next Public Works Director upon the retirement of Marwan Salum.
Second.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Oh, Deputy Mayor Honda, and then Councilmember Moore.
I would just like to say, I think that the city will miss Marwan quite a bit, and I know I will, so you have big shoes to fill, and I'm sure that you can do it, but thank you for your years of service to the City of Federalway.
Councilmember Moore, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. EJ, upon this vote here, you know, I would like to congratulate you. I'm confident that things will, will work out in the, in the best possible way here, but I, I am excited to, to work with you. Having worked with you before, I know you've done a phenomenal job, and you've always been available for, obviously, to the council and myself, and I appreciate that quite a bit, and I appreciate your demeanor and how you go about doing business. And with that being said, Marwan, and I don't really know when Marwan's last day is...
It'll be in September.
September?
Yeah, TBD.
Got it. But Marwan, I'm sure we'll, we'll have another set of thank-yous down the road, but for right now, I, I do want to say a sincere thank you. You know, I've brought concerns up to you, and you've helped me solve them. And I don't know if I've ever shared that with you, Mr. Mayor, but, you know, I know that every time I brought up concerns, Marwan has really resolved them, and I think that's what it's about. You know, we want to see a government that resolves issues and moves forward, and so you've been a big part of that, Marwan, and I sincerely appreciate everything you've done.
All right. Councilmember Copeng.
I think transitions are always interesting, and I know for, Marwan, for you, looking forward to retirement, I think it was very important to you to make sure that you had someone coming behind you that you believed could, could carry the torch and do, continue the good job that has been done here. And I think we've been very fortunate to have such great Public Works Directors. I think of Kerry Rowe, and the, the good work that he did for all the years he was here, and then you picked right up on that, and I'm looking forward to, EJ, you continuing that tradition of service to our city. I think what really stood out to me in considering just, just a little bit of the, the process that I was, happened to be a part of in conversation, is the, the amount of, of interaction that you had with, with me, and with the rest of the council during the Performing Arts and Events Center project, and how you remained accessible and informative, and really, I think, helped us to understand all the things that were going on. I always felt like I left there better informed, even though I asked a lot of questions at times, I never felt like I was a nuisance. I felt like you were, and that's, that is exactly, I think, what we need in Public Works, is someone that can, can make the, the complex a little more simple, and basically remain accessible and attentive to the needs of the council, but certainly the citizens as well. And I think your leadership there was very effective as well. I didn't hear a bad word about anything over there, because I think that there was very, it was very effective. You were collaborative, and you were upfront, and there was clear communication, and all those things, I think, will serve you very well moving forward as the director. So, thank you.
All right. Councilmember DuKloz.
Marwan, I will say some farewell words to you, but I want to say right now, you're going to be missed. And EJ, you've got some big shoes to fill. I mean both literally and figuratively.
Okay.
Wait, wait a second.
Oh, okay, all right.
You're going to be quick to shut me off, you'll let all these people ramble on forever. I remember the tour you gave me, because I couldn't make it when other people were there at the PAC, and it was wonderful, we, I got to see the whole insides, the inner working of the PAC, which most people don't see, and it was very, very thrilling. I was one of the original people that started this program. I remember, I think it was my first term, we actually bought the property over there. And then a lot of things slowed the process down, including a major recession, and a change in the form of government, and money, of course. But it's done, it's a beautiful facility, and I want to thank you for everything you did with that.
Thank you.
All right, there's been a motion and a second, or has, actually, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have a new, or soon-to-be-new Public Works Director.
Thank you.
EJ, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council, first and foremost, thank you. Most of you took the words that I was going to say in honoring Marwan. You know, he's been a city employee for a long time. Now, I had already come up with the big shoes to fill, but I think that's been said about three times. So, it, it is big shoes to fill. He's provided a lot of guidance to the department over the last several years in his current role, and prior to that as well, and really shaped a lot of the activities of the city, both within Public Works and, you know, a broader presence throughout. So it, it is big shoes to fill. To that, I'm, I'm looking forward to it, I'm looking forward to many of the things that the council members said tonight, to continuing working with each and every one of you, and advancing the city. I think we've, over the last several years, accomplished a lot, and I look forward to accomplishing much more.
Well, thank you, EJ, and thank you for your willingness to serve. I do need to tell you, though, that on probably every time over the course of the past four years, where the first flake of snow drops, whether it's on a Christmas Day, or on some Saturday or Sunday night, my wife is like, you are not calling Marwan Salum right now, are you? You put that phone down, you're not going to call Marwan right now. And I'm like, I've got to call Marwan, the snow's coming down. So, Marwan has always been on the other end of that phone, always been completely gracious, and, and our, our crews have, have performed, and, and when I, when I get permission, I actually make that call, so, anyway.
We have a good staff for that.
We do, we do. All right. Okay. Thank you, everybody, and good luck, EJ. Expect great things. And thank you, Marwan. Okay, Northlake Management District Advisory Committee appointments. Councilmember Copeng.
Yes. I would, I move to reappoint Lawrence Zimminski, Senior, Lois Kuchka, Terrence Thomas, Second, and Mary McCleone Aronan, as voting members of the Northlake Management District Advisory Committee, with terms expiring March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of those appointments?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matters passed unanimously. Parks Commission appointments. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to reappoint Don Coggins as a voting member of the Parks Commission, with the term expiring April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Thank you, Don. All right, now we're on to council reports. Councilmember Sepha Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor. The discussion tonight was really informative, and I wanted to thank Ade, and he's gone, but today's also his birthday, and we, and I, we did not say anything to him, and he's gone, so please let him know tomorrow that we acknowledged that it was his birthday. And... And when we talk about the budget and all that's going on with our city, I think we also need to recognize that our city's a growing city. There's a lot that we are visioning for our city, especially for it to be competitive in the area. You know, we always talk about being in the, in the middle of Tacoma and, and Seattle, and so I think, visioning is all about the best for our future, for our city, for it to be an appealing city, and for people to want to come and live here, work here. And so I think, as we're talking about the budget, as we're talking about the, the shortfalls, I think we also need to be creative to make this city a viable city and a city that is moving forward and not regressing at all. So, I'm happy, and I would, again, want to thank the Finance Department for all the hard work that they put into this process, and also my fellow council member for all the time and the thoughtfulness that goes into this. None of us made the decision we did, just because it took a lot of courage, it took a lot of thinking, and I just want to say thank you to everyone here, and thank you, Mayor, also for the leadership. Yeah, and that's it for me.
All right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank Ade and Doug Baxter as well for their presentations. I think they were both very informative, and it was great to have that discussion around the budget, as well as the Violence Prevention Steering Committee. I also want to second Lamont, who talked about the talent show. So, just so everyone knows, April 14th, you can buy tickets at the door, and you can also buy them from Lamont as well. I would stack up our youth talent against anyone in the nation, and it's going to be a great show, there's going to be nine or 10 acts, everything from tap dancing, the spoken word, to dance, it's going to be great. So, really hope the community comes out, and also the elected officials, so, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Trapp. Okay, Councilmember Copeng.
Thank you, Mayor. I began the LETC meeting last night talking about, I think, the approach that at least we were going to have on the LETC Committee, or I, what I thought was a viable approach for us, and that, that is to balance the need, the needs of the city by looking at things both strategically, but also looking at essentials and non-essentials. I think it's, whenever you're in a budget crisis, I think, I think of my own personal life, there's things that you can do that may save you money now, but don't serve you well in the future. So, I think we need to keep a strategic focus on how we are allocating funds, but I also think we need to look very seriously at the essential and non-essential as well. And I think that last night, we struck a good balance. I think in the end, we're, we're all going to work to, to, to preserve the financial stability of the city as best we can, and I think that we, our approach last night at LETC reflected that, and I'm sure will be supported by the full council on the vote coming up with the next council meeting. But again, I think, you know, we are a city that, there's been tremendous amount of investment made, and it's been strategic investment, and as we look to the future, it's very important for us to recognize that we are in a better place now than we were when we had cyclone fences and, and refuse basically littering our downtown core. I think of the article that Andy Hobbs, who's now the publisher of The Mirror, wrote about five years ago, talking about urban blight, and the subject was where Pete von, Pete von Baurway intersects with 316th. And that corner has definitely changed dramatically in the time, in the time since, and the, the development that is coming, I think is only going to support the decisions that were made by previous councils and have continued to be supported by this council and the, moving forward with the staircase. So, definitely excited about our future, but again, it does come at a cost. And I, you know, I think about, you know, I think about the general funds, I think about the, the capital funds, and it kind of sounds like a lot of the noise after a while, but it really is important for us to, to, to really communicate. And so, I, I know that the feedback that I got last council meeting is that we, we can do a better job communicating, and I think that's something that I certainly will aspire to as I continue to serve the city. I want to also give a shout-out to my friends, the Park Pals, I actually did a meeting with them, or it was a meeting within the last couple of weeks, and definitely appreciate their passion for French Lake Park, I know that, that came up as a subject of, of interest in the last meeting, and I think to be able to allay some fears that there's certainly no impending move to sell that park is, I think is important for them to understand. So, anyway, I think with that, I'll conclude my report, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Just a few items here. First, I, I want to take the time to thank Doug Baxter for all of his work and commitment to our community. I know that he does a lot of work, and it's a pleasure to meet his new employee that will, that will be part of the CHI, and I look forward to getting to know him. But again, I think it's really good to hear the, the results of what they have been working on, and what we've all been doing as a community. And I do certainly like his idea of adding the violence prevention, any items, or having a discussion, rather, to see if there's any opportunities for us to add that to our legislative priorities for next year. So, you know, don't know what that would look like, but I'd like to entertain a conversation that will probably lead to some items. I do want to say that I've gotten the chance to meet the Safeway manager. Her name slips my mind, it's in my wallet, and I don't want to be struggling to get to my wallet to get to the name, but I've had many wonderful conversations with her, I do plan to sit down with her. All I can say is, in talking with, with the manager of Safeway, that they have been really pleased with our police department and, and the collaboration that's been happening thus far. And so I look forward to meeting with her and kind of learning more about what we can do to make that place a more pleasant experience for our shoppers at Safeway. And I do want to say to Dana, thank you for reading the 355, 75-page document, it is a very difficult budget to read. I, I would venture off, and I may be wrong, but I would venture off to, to say that you're one of the few that has read that, and so seriously, thank you for doing that, because I think once you start to dive into our budget, I think questions will begin to, to pop up, and, and that's very fair, and you begin to understand and connect the dots. And, and so, again, I have to do a shout-out to Ade and Chase. I know that I've, I dove very deep into the budget weeks ago, and there's a lot you can learn when doing that. And, you know, I, I know that I've talked to the mayor, and I've talked to some of my colleagues, but I would like to bring up the, the conversation at some point to, as we're looking at our budget for next year, for the next two years, to look at what's the feasibility of doing Open Gov. And what that means is having a financial dashboard on our city website where you can interact with our budget. You don't have to sift through pages and pages and pages of spreadsheets, it's, you can click on things, you can become more interactive, and you can control how you want to see that. So, it's something that I would like to continue, bring back to the conversation and, and see where that goes, as we're now discussing the budget. There is certainly, I appreciate Lamont Stiles coming here today to talk about many things, but one of them that I heard, and Don, Commissioner Coggins, talking about communications, and it's a conversation that you and I've had, Don, and, and there's a, there's, we can always improve. I think we've done good, and I think we've done better, but I am seriously looking for continuing the trend and, and moving in a positive direction where we're pushing the knob when it comes to technology and social media. It's all right there, you know? And so, again, I want to encourage the mayor, because you're the one that has the staff, to, you know, how to be, put those items together, technology and social media and communications. And I think there's a huge opportunity there that's not being met. So, if you want to read my statement on why I voted the way I voted two weeks ago, go to councilmembermore.com. April 11th, at the Federway Community Center, the city's inviting you to come help decide how to change the traffic in Federway. It is 4:00 PM to 7:30 PM, and so I, I do believe that there may be a concern of why it's starting at 4:00, because I, you know, some people do work, and so it's hard for working people to, to, to come there at, at the median 4:00 PM. And I think it's, it's the second time I've heard that kind of concern, so I look forward to the conversations to kind of understand why it's at 4:00 PM, because there's always reasons to why things are done the way they're done. And then Camp Kilworth, I'd like to get a status on that, where we're at, and what opportunities we have there. I, I understand there may be some movements, but I would like there to be some research in that. And I'm going to knock off the last thing, because I feel like I've been talking for a long time, but with that, Mr. Mayor, I will end my report, thank you.
Very good. Okay, Councilmember Duclou.
I'll be brief, as usual. I just want to remind everybody out there that building a budget isn't easy. If you tried to do it for your own household, you know what it's like, and then you have to try to account for the things that pop up unexpectedly, too. And that's what a city has to do, except ours is a lot more complicated than a household budget. And I think the budget that was put before us has been gone through many times, it's been looked over greatly where we could find savings. But there are times when you save too much, and you can't do the work that the people you're working for want you to do, and that's why you have to have staff. And if we don't have the personnel, if you want to come in and get a building permit for something, you're going to wait a year. But if we have appropriate staff, it's going to speed you right through, and you're going to be happy, and you're going to be on with your project. So, you have to look at all sides of it. And I know everybody said, "Well, cut your budget." We did cut, we cut like crazy, and they're still saying that, and that's why I'm giving this talk, which I said before, we cut down to the bare bones. And you can't run a city on bare bones, you can't keep qualified staff if you're not paying them what other cities are paying them. And then we hire new people and train them, and then they get hired by the other cities because the other cities will pay them more. That's why we had to take some of the steps that we did, we had to rebalance our budget, and we had to have a source of income. In the future, maybe the citizens of this city will vote for a property tax increase, but because of the way we were founded, we have to go to a vote of the citizens to do that, and most people don't like to tax themselves. So, that, that's another thing. It's been a struggle, and it's not something that we entered into lightheartedly either. We all, you know, we all took this very, very seriously, but we love this city, we want to keep this city safe and sound for people, and we want to provide the services that you need. That's why we took the steps that we did. And Lake Haven, I'm sorry you felt the way you did, and I'm sorry you went out getting people all riled up. That's not the way to be a good partner. And I want to thank all of you for ending before 10:00 PM tonight, for the first time, and I can't remember when. Thank you all.
Very good, thank you. Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you, so I have 35 minutes. I know. Anyway, I just have a couple of things. I'd like to thank Pastor Rick and his family for providing shelter and a safe, warm space for our families this winter. McDonald's had a ribbon cutting today for, they've remodeled the McDonald's in the crossings. It's, it's pretty awesome, if you want to go in and take a look. You can order online, and they will bring it to your car when you get there, so, yeah, another way to, to eat at McDonald's. And this book came, I've been gone for about nine days, and this book was in my mailbox, and this, to me, is one of the most important publications that this city does. It goes to every household in Federway, and it's our Parks and Rec book. And if you're looking for something for your family to do, from all ages, from little ones to senior citizens, there's something in here for you, and it goes throughout the summer, so please look at this, use it, it's an awesome publication. Thank you.
Okay. Great job, council members, and thank you, staff, for all you do, and for the folks that testified, thank you so much. With that, we are adjourned.